Ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats. Please take your seats.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our May 2025 Full City Council Meeting. Tonight's meeting is being streamed live on City 12 TV as well as the Council and YouTube and Facebook pages. We also continue to post meeting information and materials on the city's website. The meeting will now come to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Gruber. Councilmember Lightfoot.
Present, ma'am.
Councilmember Lupien. Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Patterson. Councilmember Smith. Vice President Harris.
Here.
President Melendez.
Here.
Thank you.
So tonight, I would like to ask the council and the community to join me in a moment of silence in honor of several community members that we have lost this month. One is our very own here at City Hall, Victor Saunders. Victor was a tremendous leader in violence prevention work in this community and has been for decades. And as we mourn the loss of Victor, we also mourn the loss of a young person in our community, Danielis Pabon Kubero. In addition, I'd like to call out some of our elders in the community we have lost. Martha Hope. Richmond Futch. And James Muhammad. Dekeid Kevin Davis. And all others who have suffered loss in our community this month. So I ask the council and the community, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Councilmember Gruber, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to invite my colleagues to join me at the podium for tonight's recognitions. So tonight, like every council night, we are hosting our recognition ceremony. This month, we have two separate groups we're acknowledging, so I will start by calling up those who are here on behalf of Bicycle Safety Month. Please work your way up to the front to join us as I call your organization. Major Taylor Cycling Club. Rochester Def Cyclists. Conki Cruisers. Rochester Accessible Adventures. Rochester Youth Cycling Club. Our Community Bikes. Genesee Valley Cycling Club. Bill Collins from Maplewood Neighborhood Association. Reconnect Rochester. And Black Girls Do Bike. We can give them all a round of applause. For this council, it's an honor to join you all this month in recognizing Bicycle Safety Month, an important and dedicated time to reflect on bike safety here in the city of Rochester, as well as education and the well-being of cyclists across our community and country. Between 2013 and 2023, Rochester experienced approximately 3,200 pedestrian and bicyclist injuries or fatalities due to traffic accidents, averaging over 300 incidents annually. A record high for the city in far too close, too many lives, um, excuse me, and far too many lose their lives due to preventable crashes. These incidents are not merely statistics. They are lives disrupted, families changed, and communities impacted. Bicycle Safety Month serves as a critical reminder that safety is a shared responsibility. This year, my colleagues and I were thrilled to support the city's Rock Vision Zero Initiative, aiming to eliminate all traffic fatalities and severe injuries through education, infrastructure, investment, and enforcement. This month is an opportunity to not only reflect on Rochester's continued commitment to active transportation, but also to honor the organizations, individuals, and community members who are advancing bike safety. I want to extend my sincere thanks to many cyclist organizations across Rochester for their outstanding work and dedication during Bike Safety Week. Your efforts, whether through educational events, community rides, helmet giveaways, or advocacy for safer streets, play a vital role in protecting lives and promoting a healthier, more connected city. Your commitment continues to not only support cyclists of all ages and backgrounds, but also contributes to a more sustainable and vibrant Rochester. We are grateful for all of your leadership, your passion, and partnership in making our streets safer and streets safer across Monroe County. Thank you very much. So we will pause for a quick picture with the group. So we have one more recognition that we want to do this month. May marks Teacher Appreciation Month, and today, we are proud to recognize our out-of-school-time OST teachers, those who represent the full spectrum of educators shaping the lives of young people in the city of Rochester. If you are here on behalf of Teacher Appreciation Month, please come and join us in the front. Well, when we think of teachers, we often picture someone standing in front of a classroom, leading lessons and guiding students through academic content. But the reality is that teaching and the impact of educators extends far beyond the school day. Teachers in all their forms influence our growth in ways that often go unseen but are deeply felt and profoundly important. Out-of-school-time teachers are mentors, coaches, counselors, and community leaders. These dedicated professionals who stand before you work before and after school, on weekends, and through the summer. They provide critical academic support, mentorship, and enrichment that expands learning opportunities beyond the traditional classroom, often working behind the scenes. Teachers help close opportunity gaps, foster social-emotional growth, and create safe, nurturing spaces for students. These teachers guide us through the challenges of life, helping us develop not just academically but emotionally and socially. They provide wisdom in moments of confusion, offer encouragement when we falter, and push us to be our best when we need it most. They provide spaces where we learn teamwork, leadership, and the value of collaboration. They are often the ones who help us navigate the complexities of life. These teachers teach us to be resilient, to have confidence in our abilities, and to embrace the values of hard work and perseverance. They inspire us to follow our passions and discover new talents, often sparking the very interests that shape our future careers and endeavors. So on behalf of Rochester City Council, to all of you, we say we owe you a debt of gratitude and service. Your dedication to our youth's development out of the classroom has far-reaching and immeasurable impact. You are helping raise our children, our neighbors, our young people across the city. And you're raising a generation of capable, compassionate, and driven individuals. We honor your service, we recognize your impact, and we are grateful for everything you do to uplift young people in the city of Rochester. Thank you all. So this picture's gonna be a lot harder, so what we're gonna do is all of council will come up on the dais behind us, and we'll do the line first of thank yous, and then we'll go up on the dais for the picture. Thank you. And I was just reminded, so I'll say it out loud, we have two educators, out-of-school-time and in-school-time, on our body, three. Three educators on our body, so I want to acknowledge them as well.
Thanks, everyone, thank you.
Sounds great.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Don't take nobody's germs home.
Miguel. Let, excuse him for a class.
So thank you all for being here tonight. You're welcome to stay around for the council meeting, but if you wanted to transition out, this would probably be the best time to do so. Thank you. All right, so next on our agenda, we have the approval of the minutes by Councilmember Lightfoot.
Thank you, Mr. President. Be it resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of April 29, 2025 be approved as published in the official sheets of the proceedings.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
The following documents are hereby directed to be received and filed. The council submits disclosure of interest forms from President Melendez on introductory number 163, Councilmember Gruber on introductory numbers 140 and 171, Vice President Harris and Councilmember Lupien on introductorys number 167 and 182.
Thank you, these documents will be received and filed. This time, we're looking for any reference of petitions and other communications. Are there any petitions? Hearing none, we'll move on to the reports of standing committees and actions thereon. Councilmember Chairperson Patterson, the Neighborhood, Jobs, and Housing Committee report, please.
Thank you. The Neighborhood, Jobs, and Housing Committee recommends for adoption of following entitled legislation, introductory number 130, authorizing the sale of real estate.
Councilmember Patterson, is your mic on?
A little closer to the mic. We do a little closer to the mic. The Neighborhood, Jobs, and Housing Committee recommends for adoption of following entitled legislation, introductory number 130, authorizing the sale of real estate. Introductory number 133, authorizing appropriation amending the 2024 budget and a loan agreement for the 733 Portland LLC Affordable Rental Project. Introductory number 134, authorizing a grant agreement relating to a regional revitalization partnership program to redevelop 151 Mount Hope Avenue. The Neighborhood, Jobs, and Housing Committee recommends for consideration of following entitled legislation, introductory number 131, approving a revised urban renewal plan for the Norton Street Urban Renewal Area. Introductory number 132, amending the zoning code pertaining to the Norton Street Urban Renewal District. Introductory number 135, local improvement ordinance establishing the 2025-2026 assessments and authorizing agreement for the High Falls Business Improvement District. This report is respectfully submitted by Council President Miguel A. Melendez Jr., Council Vice President Lashae D. Harris, Councilmember Kimberly Smith, Councilmember Michael Gruber, sorry, Mitch Gruber, and myself, Michael A. Patterson.
Thank you, Chairperson Patterson, that report will be received, filed, and published, and we'll proceed with the vote. Introductory number 130, authorizing the sale of real estate. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 131, approving a revised urban renewal plan for the Norton Street Urban Renewal Area. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 132, amending the zoning code pertaining to the Norton Street Urban Renewal District. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 133, authorizing appropriation amending the 2024-25 budget and a loan agreement for the 733 Portland LLC Affordable Rental Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 134, authorizing a grant agreement relating to a regional revitalization partnership program to redevelop 151 Mount Hope Avenue. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 135, a local improvement ordinance establishing the 2025-26 assessments and authorizing an agreement for the High Falls Business Improvement District. This requires a roll call.
Councilmember Gruber. Councilmember Lightfoot.
Yes.
Councilmember Lupien.
No.
Councilmember Martin.
No.
Councilmember Monroe.
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith. Vice President Harris.
Yes.
President Melendez.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Council Vice President, the People, Parks, and Public Works Committee report, please.
Thank you, President Melendez. The People, Parks, and Public Works Committee recommends for adoption the following entitled legislation, introductory number 130, appropriating funds amending the 2024-25 budget, authorizing the agreement for an aging-in-place pilot. Introductory number 137, a bond ordinance of the city of Rochester, New York, authorizing issuance of $1,835 of bonds of said city financed to finance the Maplewood Park Trail improvements. Introductory number 138, authorizing agreement for the Maplewood Park Trail Improvements Project. Introductory number 139, authorizing a grant application and agreement related to New York State of, I'm sorry, the New York State Department of State Coastal Rehabilitation and Resilience Project Program. Introductory number 140, authorizing grant agreements for a mandatory artist agreement for a public art installation at Brooks Landing. Introductory number 141, authorizing agreement with Genesee Transportation Council. Introductory number 142, authorizing an agreement for Lake Avenue Bridge over CSX Transportation Project. Introductory number 143, authorizing a mandatory agreement for the St. Paul Street Underpassing Improvement Projects. Introductory number 144, authorizing a grant agreement related to a lighting and sidewalk upgrades at the intersection of Brooks Avenue and Thurston Road. Introductory number 145, authorizing agreements and appropriations for the Main Street Skate Phase III Project. Introductory number 146, a resolution authorizing the implementation and funding in the first instance 100% of the federal aid and state Marchesselli program aid eligible costs of Main Street Skate Phase III Transportation Federal Aid Project and appropriating funds therefore. Introductory number 148, authorizing agreement for drinking water laboratory services, Cobb's Hills and Highland Reservoirs. Introductory number 149, authorizing agreement for drinking water quality laboratory services. Introductory number 150, authorizing agreement for wastewater analysis. Introductory number 151, authorizing agreement for a non-hazardous special solid waste disposal services. Introductory number 152, authorizing a mandatory for compost pilot program services. Introductory number 153, authorizing a mandatory agreement for on-call therapist services for the Department of Recreation and Human Services. Introductory number 154, authorizing a mandatory agreement for team building, culture, and climate consulting services. Introductory number 155, authorizing an intramiserable grant agreement to support recreation, positive youth development programming. Introductory number 156, authorizing agreement for the Stop Violence Against Women's Act Grant Program. Introductory number 157, authorizing agreement in amending the 2024-25 budget related to the New York State statewide investment in more swimming grant. Introductory number 158, authorizing a mandatory agreement relating to on-call therapist services for animal services personnel. The People, Parks, and Public Works Committee recommends consideration for the following entitled legislation, introductory number 147, a local improvement ordinance establishing the cost of special work and services related to Main Street improvements of the Down Pound Enhancement District for 2025-26. And introductory number 159, amending the local improvement ordinance number 1827 pertaining to the care and embellishments of street malls for 2025-26. The People, Parks, and Public Works Committee recommends that following entitled legislation be held in committee. Introductory number 113, a local improvement ordinance for the care and embellishments of street malls for 2025-26. This report was respectfully submitted by Councilmember Willie J. Lightfoot, Councilmember Mary Lupien, Councilmember Michael A. Patterson, Vice President Lashae D. Harris, and President, oh, and myself. The report will be filed, received, and published. Oh.
I got that. Sorry about that. All right, so that report will be received, filed, and published, and we'll proceed with the vote. Introductory number 136, appropriating funds, amending the 2024-25 budget, and authorizing an agreement for an aging-in-place pilot. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 137, a bond ordinance of the city of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of $1,835,000 bonds of said city to finance the Maplewood Park Trail Improvements Project. This requires a roll call.
Councilmember Gruber. Councilmember Lightfoot.
Yes.
Councilmember Lupien.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Monroe.
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith. Vice President Harris.
Yes.
President Melendez.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Introductory number 138, authorizing an agreement for the Maplewood Park Trail Improvements Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 139, authorizing a grant application and agreement related to the New York State Department of State's Coastal Rehabilitation and Resilience Projects Program. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 140, authorizing grant agreements and a mandatory artist agreement for the public art installation at Brooks Landing. Councilmember Gruber is an employee of U of R. He's required to disclose only and can participate in the deliberations and the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 141, authorizing an agreement with Genesee Transportation Council. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Int introductory number one forty-two, authorizing an agreement for the Lake Avenue Bridge Over CSX Transportation Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Int introductory number one forty-three, authorizing a mandatory agreements for the St. Paul Street Underpass Improvements Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Int introductory number one forty-four, authorizing a grant agreement related to lighting and sidewalk upgrades at the intersection of Brooks Avenue and Thurston Road. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Int introductory number one forty-five, authorizing agreements and appropriations for the Main Street Streetscape Phase Three Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Int introductory number one forty-six, a local improvement ordinance establishing the levy for special work and services on the areaway treatment at twenty-three dash twenty-seven East Main Street for two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-six. Sorry, we're just checking something with the clerk really quick. So on one forty-six, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Int introductory number one forty-seven, a local improvement ordinance establishing the cost of special work and services related to Main Street improvements of downtown enhancement district for two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-six. This requires a roll call.
Councilmember Gruber.
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot.
Yes.
Councilmember Lupien.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Monroe.
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Harris.
Yes.
President Melendez.
Yes. So, we're just gonna go back for the record and make sure we have the title right on one forty-six. One forty-six was a resolution authorizing the implementation and funding of the first instance of a hundred percent of the federal aid and state Marchesselli Program Aid eligible costs of the Main Street Streetscape Phase Three Transportation Federal Aid Project and appropriating funds therefore. Well, I read into the record that it was intro forty-six, Corporation Council, do we have to revote that, or is that fine to just read that in the record to correct it?
I think we can call it a clerical correction.
Thank you.
Yep.
My apologies, team. Alright, introductory number one forty-eight, authorizing an agreement for drinking water laboratory services for Cobb's Hill and Highland Reservoirs.
Did we do one forty-seven?
Uh, yes we did.
Okay.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Int introductory number one forty-nine, authorizing agreement for drinking water quality laboratory services. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Int introductory number one fifty, authorizing agreement for wastewater analysis. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Int introductory number one fifty-one, authorizing agreement for non-hazardous special solid waste disposal services. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Int introductory number one fifty-two, authorizing a mandatory agreement for compost pilot program services. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Int introductory number one fifty-three, authorizing a mandatory agreement for on-call therapist services for the Department of Recreation and Human Services. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Int introductory number one fifty-four, authorizing a mandatory agreement for team building, culture, and climate consulting services. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Int introductory number one fifty-five, authorizing an interminable agreement, grant agreement to support recreation and positive youth development programming. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Int introductory number one fifty-six, authorizing agreement for the Stop Violence Against Women's Act Grant Program. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Int introductory number one fifty-seven, authorizing agreement and amending the two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-five budget related to the New York statewide investment and more swimming grant. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Int introductory number one fifty-eight, authorizing a mandatory agreement relating to on-call therapist services for animal services personnel. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Int introductory number one fifty-nine, amending local improvement ordinance number eighteen twenty-seven pertaining to the care and embellishment of street malls for two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-six. This requires a roll call.
Councilmember Gruber.
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot.
Yes.
Councilmember Lupien.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Monroe.
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Harris.
Yes.
President Melendez.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Chairperson Gruber, the Budget, Finance, and Governance Committee report, please.
To the Council, the Budget, Finance, and Governance Committee recommends for adoption the following entitled legislation. Int introductory number one sixty, appropriating funds, amending the two thousand four dash twenty-five budget, and authorizing agreements for community-based initiatives as amended. Int introductory number one sixty-one, amending ordinance number two thousand twenty-four dash three sixty-two relating to a grant agreement and appropriation to install a community messaging sign of the engine number five firehouse located at four fifty Lyle Avenue. Int introductory number one sixty-two, authorizing an agreement relating to the two thousand twenty-five Rochester Fringe Festival. Int introductory number one sixty-three, authorizing an agreement with Puerto Rico Festival Incorporated. Int introductory number one sixty-four, authorizing an agreement with the Rochester Philharmonic Orchestra for public music performances. Int introductory number one sixty-five, authorizing an agreement for the Sunday Game Tailgate Event. Int introductory number one sixty-six, authorizing an agreement for fireworks displays. Int introductory number one sixty-seven, authorizing an mandatory inter municipal agreement with the Rochester City School District for the Pillars of Hope Initiative. Int introductory number one sixty-eight, appropriating funds and authorizing a mandatory agreements for neighborhood ambassador programs in the Monroe and Lyle Avenue areas. Int introductory number one sixty-nine, authorizing an agreement for project and portfolio management software acquisition and implementation. Int introductory number one seventy, authorizing an agreement relating to fiscal intermediary services for office of financial empowerment programs. Int introductory number one seventy-one, a resolution approving an appointment to the Rochester Public Library Board of Trustees. Int introductory number one seventy-two, authorizing an agreement related to background screening services. Int introductory number one seventy-three, a resolution approving an appointment to the Rochester Civil Service Commission. Int introductory number one seventy-four, approving the apportionment of taxes and charges. Int introductory number one eighty, determining and certifying base proportions, current percentages, and base percentages for the two thousand twenty-five assessment role. Int introductory number one eighty-one, determining and certifying adjusted base proportions, assessed value, and net changes in assessed value for the two thousand twenty-five assessment role. Int introductory number one eighty-two, a bond ordinance of the City of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed fifty-five million dollar bonds and bond anticipation notes of said city to provide financing for certain preliminary costs of planning, development, and construction for improvements to specified city school district schools respecting Phase Three of the Rochester Joint Schools Construction Board Facilities Modernization Program. The Budget, Finance, and Governance Committee recommends for consideration the following titled legislation. Int introductory number one seventy-five, a local improvement ordinance establishing the operating and maintenance costs, the operating and maintenance costs of neighborhood commercial and residential parking areas for twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, twenty six. This report was respectfully submitted by Councilmembers Stanley Martin, Bridgette Monroe, LaShay Harris, Miguel Melendez, and myself, Mitch Gruber.
Thank you Chairperson Gruber, that report will be received, filed, and published, and we'll proceed with the vote. Int introductory number one sixty, appropriating funds, amending the two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-five budget.
Council President, I'd like to make a motion to...
Can I finish reading the, into the record? The item?
Yes.
Thank you. Int introductory number one sixty, appropriating funds, amending the two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-five budget, and authorizing agreements for community-based initiatives as amendment. Councilmember Lupien.
Thank you. Just wanna get in there before we got the vote. I wanted to make an amendment to, or a motion to send introductory one sixty back to committee. There was one of the projects that the community had a lot of issue with and not being included in the decision-making, and I would like a little bit more time to see if we can either have that be its own introductory, or to learn a little bit more about how the community feels about this. So I'm looking for a second.
I'll second it. I think the project being discussed is really interesting, but I was very moved by community members coming in, showing support for their council member, but also saying, hey, we wanna have some input here. So I second.
Thank you. It's difficult with these, one introductory with multiple projects, so there are lots of projects that are wonderful that, you know, I understand that this might hold up, but I think it's an important fiduciary responsibility to make sure that we're spending our funds in the way the community would like us to.
So there's a motion on the floor, any further discussion on the motion? Councilmember Gruber.
A question for, in particular, Councilmembers Patterson and Harris, who both had projects that were related to summer programming. What does a delay by a month do to your work?
It is detrimental to our work, quite frankly. We are looking to engage summer programming or activities that we need to do now. We need to start that contracting now. We need to recruit students now, and if you delay it a month, it's a summer program. A month delay puts us directly into the summer. It will be detrimental.
Any other, Councilmember Martin?
Yeah, to Corporation Council, are there mechanisms we can use to split the legislation on the floor, recognizing what Councilmember Patterson is saying and wanting to honor that?
I think if there are particular folks who are being funded, right, for one particular district, you could amend the item to strike those groups, right, and then next month come with new legislation just for that quadrant. I think it would work. The rules say you need an amendment in writing, but I think that could be an approach.
So I'd like to withdraw my motion to send it back to committee. Can we make an amendment to strike the forest, the Bridgette Monroe's project for her district from this month's legislation as it doesn't seem as time-sensitive? Would we be able to move this item to give our staff time to type up that amendment?
Councilmember Monroe.
Yes. During the committee meetings of the BFG, I spoke for, I'd say, at least five minutes with details about the Milwaukee Forest, the progress, the process that I did. Unfortunately, Councilmember Lupien, you were not present. I would have hoped you would have at least listened to it on YouTube to have gotten that full background. In fact, I went on so long that Chair Gruber kinda ushered me off the floor so that we could hear from the other members who had items. Further, you could have spoken with me before this. I certainly will not be in support of your motion.
Wow.
So is there, in terms of the process, just a clarification from Corporation Council, do we have, so we have to have that written before we can vote, even consider voting on it?
Correct. Council rules require any amendments to be in writing before the body, before a vote is taken.
So Councilmember Lupien, just as a follow-up to that, I know that, actually it was Councilmember Martin that raised this. This wasn't something that was worked on before the meeting then, from your perspective? This was not a conversation that, I guess I'm posing the question to both of you, that was had with Councilmember Monroe on the subject?
So focusing on the amendment piece, I'm really interested in how we would be able to procedurally do that, as that's a question on the floor.
I would like to answer Council President's questions. Stanley Member, Councilmember Martin, you asked for some follow-up questions regarding the different projects, and we got that today. So I'm asking for a little bit more time because of the very strong requests from several members of the community to give this some more thought. So that's where I'm coming from.
Councilmember Monroe, you wanna?
Yes. In response, Council President, no, there was no discussion about this. Furthermore, these responses to which Councilmember Lupien is referring were not received today, but they were received either yesterday or the day prior.
So I think to that end, I mean, there is a motion on the floor without something in front of us, there was no prep work on an amendment. Procedurally, Corporation Council, is it procedurally acceptable to move an item while someone works on an amendment, or what is the process?
To move the item as originally drafted? Is that what you mean?
To move the item in the order in terms of the vote while someone was drafting.
I see what you're saying. Yeah, I think you could, you could table this item with the intention of coming back to it later in the meeting, if you wanted to do that.
Mr. President.
Councilmember Patterson.
I would request that we take a brief pause, a little recess, allow the council member to prepare her amendment, and any other amendments that may wish to be prepared on this item at this time.
So we will take a brief, we'll call it less than five minutes recess to prepare an amendment, and then we will return. We're in recess. Okay, we have returned from our recess, and there is an amendment being offered.
We have to formally make the motion?
Yes, I want to know, so who is offering the amendment, to be clear?
I can make the amendment, make, I would like to make an amendment to strike Section 11 from Introductory Number 160, which you all have a copy of.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so there's been movement of seconds, so any discussion on the amendment?
Yes. So the first thing I would like to say is, if I could, I've received some feedback, and I appreciate the feedback, and if I could go back and do things differently, I would have definitely spent more time, or any time, talking to you about it. I, I'm supporting this amendment based on what community shared, and I do know how it feels to have an amendment proposed without that time to talk and discuss, so I do want to honor that, and I'm committing in public to, in the future, making sure I allocate time to discuss. I know this is important to you, again, I think it's a cool idea, and I'm not opposed to it in principle, just supporting community from what I heard.
Yeah, I would also like to comment.
Councilmember Lupian.
Thank you. I can definitely acknowledge that this could have been done in advance. However, you know, when the community came to us, I would have thought there would be more discussion, and I would hear more of kind of the outcome of that. And the email that we did get today, your response was NA, understanding that councilmember Martin was talking about organizations, but I think the spirit of what you were trying to get at was to understand a little bit more about the process. I also want to acknowledge that the reason that the email came today was because me and my staff got our answers into the questions late, maybe Saturday. So I'll take accountability for that as well. But regardless of the, you know, the answers to those questions, I haven't heard follow-up about how the community is feeling about this. So if you'd like to offer that.
All right, councilmember Monroe, floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. I think the most critical piece here is that you did not ask. You heard two people speak at Speak to Council. Again, you did not ask. You are not here for committee meetings. You chose not to listen to it on YouTube to see the very lengthy answer I gave, including process and everything that I have gone through to research. I have a very mixed district of people with different challenges and needs. One of the reasons that this forest works is because when I was running for office, as I was talking to people about ways that city-owned vacant lots can give back to their neighborhoods, this is a way to do that. And I'm sorry that you were not here, nor did you learn about what a Miyawaki forest is, the fact that it can be on as little as 1,000 square feet. The one we're looking to do will probably be about 2,000 square feet. This would introduce to neighborhoods for children the ability to actually see a forest, including all the birds and other creatures that it would bring, along with the cooling, along with the fact that this project is something that will be giving back to this community for, could be a whole hundred years. So-
That speaks to another question that I have.
Well, councilmember, were you done? I just want to make sure.
Yes, I'm done.
All right. Councilmember Lupian, last on this item?
Yes, I'm working with the administration, and that is why this was going to cash capital, to defray costs.
Well, I guess that's, that isn't an answer to the question, and, and maybe administration can answer this. Do we have assurance that these forests being planted, that these lots are forever in perpetuity not to be developed?
There's only one council member, this is a pilot program.
Thank you for the correction. The $100,000 for one vacant lot, do we have assurance that it will not be redeveloped in perpetuity? I think that's a question for maybe the deputy mayor or the mayor, or perhaps NBD?
So we're certainly not planning to go through this exercise and spend $100,000 to turn around and waste it?
Oh, I would agree, but where is that in writing?
Would you like it in writing?
I would.
Okay.
I would like some assurance legally, that if we're spending $100,000 to put a forest on the vacant lot, which I understand all of the benefits for forests, that we have some assurance, and that I'm not downvoting this, I'm asking for more time. That's why I proposed the moment, the amendment.
Yeah, I think we need to explore that further than, than in a 30-second conversation in a council meeting.
I, I totally agree with you.
Right, so that's certainly something we can, we can discuss, right? How are we going to ensure that this property is used for a significant length of time, that we get the forest, we get our investment, and we don't go off the rails?
Because, you know, the, for this administration, that's a priority. A, a next administration might change it, so if we're going to spend the money, let's protect it.
Alright, so we have a, a motion on the floor, and I want to do a roll call vote on the motion. To be clear, if you say yes, you are supporting striking the sections, Section 11, and if you say no, you are against striking Section 11. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Gruber?
No.
Councilmember Lightfoot?
No.
Councilmember Lupien?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Monroe?
No.
Councilmember Patterson?
No.
Councilmember Smith? Vice President Harris?
No.
President Melendez?
No. Alright, the motion fails on the amendment. Okay, any other discussion on introductory number 160?
I would still like an answer to that question from LA, to make sure that, that will be protected.
And, okay?
Oh, I, I have something, are you calling?
Councilmember Martin, sorry.
Yeah, so I, I thought it was really cool what we were able to just do procedurally. For clarification, Patrick, in the future, when we want to table something to amend, does the president need to authorize it? Does it need to go through a vote on the floor? Just procedural clarification, because I'm sure it'll come up again in the future.
Yep, I can follow up with you on that.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, so we will move to a vote on introductory, yes, Councilmember Lightfoot?
Thank you, because that was a very, very, that was a very good point Councilmember Martin just made, and I, I just wanted, for the record, I want to be clear, for precedence purposes, for tonight's meeting, though, uh, through to the administration, corporate council, that was done on, as of your recommendation or counsel to what was, what was able to be optioned, right, and then, and then the president chose to take that option tonight. For the record, just for anyone watching this, because we've, this has been a debated issue within this body for a long time, and it's gone, it's gone both ways. It's gone where that has not been done by the president, and that has not been respected to do that and to take this time. Matter of fact, I think this is my, only the second time, maybe, out of whole history, and I've been here eight years, seven years, that that's ever happened, so I think that's a very, very, very good point that Councilmember Martin makes, and should be something that should be very clear, and not just given to the council members in their emails. In addition to that, that should be something for the record, that should be put, uh, for the whole public to understand, because that will be a pivotable moment in this body, in the future, okay? So I, I think that's very, very, should not just be behind the scenes, that should be a very open and understood process.
I just want to echo that, this was an exercise in democracy, and...
Councilmember, um, sorry, go ahead, sorry.
And I appreciate you being willing to engage in that exercise, even though ultimately it failed. We showed the public a little bit of how we do our work, and why, and the levers of power and how they work, so thank you.
Thank you. Corporal and council?
Just a quick clarification about what actually happened here tonight. So, when I was asked the question about what we can do, I said we could move to table it. That didn't actually happen, right? We didn't table it and pick it up later. What happened was, instead, Councilmember Patterson suggested that the chair call a recess to the meeting, which is what happened, and so we went into recess based on that, and then folks worked on the amendment. So, what we had here tonight was not a tabling of the item and taking it up later, once we had a written amendment, we just recessed the proceedings to give folks time to, to write the amendments.
And I'm not trying to argue with you, but you were asked two questions. That was on question number one. Question number two was, could we strike it, and then make the amendment, and then bring it back, and you said, yeah, that's, that's, that can be done. And then he chose to do, you gave us, there was a couple options that were on the table, and so he just chose option two.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, so I'm going to move us back to the legislative business on the agenda, introductory number 161, amending ordinance number 2024-362 relating to a grant agreement and appropriation...
Wait, 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 wait a minute, wait a minute. Do we need to vote on introductory number 160 as amended?
I stand corrected. We need to vote on...
160.
I thought we...
No, no, we voted on amending it, we didn't, the amendment failed, now we need to vote on...
Understood, thank you very much, I appreciate that. So we are still on 160, my, my apologies. So in closing with 160, we will vote on 160 as amended...
No, previously amended.
As amended in committee, not tonight.
Right.
As amended in committee. So we'll do a roll call vote on introductory number 160.
Councilmember Gruber?
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot?
Yes.
Councilmember Lupien?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Monroe?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith? Vice President Harris?
Yes.
President Melendez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Introductory number 161, amending ordinance number 2024-362 relating to a grant agreement and appropriation to install a community messaging sign at the Engine 5 Firehouse located at 450 Lyle Avenue. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 162, authorizing an agreement relating to the 2025 Rochester Fringe Festival. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 163, authorizing an agreement with Puerto Rican Festival Incorporated. There is one disclosure for this item, excuse me, it's, uh, for myself, as the president of the Puerto Rican Festival is my campaign manager, I am required to disclose, but I will be able to participate in the deliberations and the vote. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 164, authorizing an agreement with the Rochester Philharmonic Ortho Orchestra for public music performances. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 165, authorizing an agreement for the Sunday Game Tailgate Event. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 166, authorizing an agreement for fireworks displays. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Roll call.
Councilmember Gruber? Councilmember Lightfoot?
Yes.
Councilmember Lupien?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
No.
Councilmember Monroe?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith? Vice President Harris?
Yes.
President Melendez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Introductory number 167, authorizing an ammendatory intermunicipal agreement with the Rochester City School District for the Pillars of Hope Initiative. There are disclosures on this item, as Vice President Harris and Councilmember Lupien are both employed by the district, however, they are only required to disclose and may participate in discussion in the vote. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 168, appropriating funds and authorizing ammendatory agreements for neighborhood ambassador programs in Monroe Avenue and Lyle Avenue areas. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 169, authorizing an agreement for project and portfolio management software acquisition and implementation. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 170, authorizing an agreement relating to fiscal intermediary services for Office of Financial Empowerment programs. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Excuse me. Introductory number 171, a resolution approving an appointment to the Rochester Public Library Board of Trustees. Councilmember Gruber is disclosing on this item, but he's only required to disclose and can participate in discussion in the vote. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 172, authorizing an agreement related to background screening services. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 173, a resolution approving appointment to the Rochester Civil Service Commission. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 174, approving the apportionment of taxes and charges. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 175, a local improvement ordinance establishing the operating and maintenance costs of neighborhood commercial and residential parking areas for 2025-26. This requires a roll call.
Councilmember Gruber?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Lightfoot?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Lupien?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Monroe?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith? Vice President Harris?
Yes.
President Melendez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Introductory number 180, determining and certifying base proportions, current percentages, and base percentages for the 2025 assessment roll. All in favor, please say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 181, determining and certifying adjusted base proportions, assessed value, and net changes in assessed value for the 2025 assessment roll. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 182, a bond ordinance of the City of Rochester, New York, authorizing issuance of not-to-exceed $55 million bonds and bond anticipation notes of said city to provide financing for certain preliminary costs of planning, development, and construction for improvements to specified city school district schools respecting Phase III of the Rochester Joint Schools Construction Board Facilities Modernization Program. We do have two disclosures on this item, Vice President Harris and Councilmember Lupien, but they may participate in the discussion and the vote. This requires a roll call.
Councilmember Gruber?
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot?
Yes.
Councilmember Lupien?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Monroe?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith? Vice President Harris?
Yes.
President Melendez?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion carries. Chair Gruber, do you have a motion related to introductory number 176, authorizing an ammendatory agreement for conflict council services for litigation involving the Police Accountability Board?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to discharge introductory number 176 from committee. Can I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, and so let's vote on discharging 176 from committee. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I would like to make a motion to amend introductory number 176, authorizing an ammendatory agreement for conflict council services for litigation involving the Police Accountability Board. The amendment is on people's desk, can I have a second?
Second.
Alright, it's been moved in second, so we'll have any discussion, any questions, comments, concerns related to this introductory?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Does the, so, what does the increase offer? Uh, so there was a previous amount, and I know we're considering additional litigation, uh, so is it for, I'm, I'm struggling because I don't want to discuss the litigation strategy and what comes next in public, so...
Yeah, I, I think the cat's out of the bag a little bit on some of this already, so, um, the original legislation, um, saw, I think, $55,000 more. That was to get us through summary judgment motion practice, is just where we are currently. Um, we got the decision in the meantime, the additional money will be for an appeal and, and any other, um, legal procedural issues that are incidental to the appeal.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns before we vote on the amendment? Alright, so we have the amendment in front of us, all in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, that motion carries, so now we'll vote on introductory number 176 as amended. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Chairperson Lightfoot, the Public Safety Committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Uh, to the council, the Public Safety Committee recommends for adoption the entitled legislation. Introduction number 177, authorizing an agreement related to the Peer Navigators for Crisis Intervention Service Unit. Introduction number 178, authorizing an ammendatory agreement related to firefighter physical agility tests, respectfully submitted by Councilmember Dr. Mitch Gruber, Councilmember Mary Lupien, Councilmember Stanley Martin, Councilmember Richard Monroe, Councilmember Michael Patterson, Councilmember Kim Smith, Councilmember Vice President LaShay Harris, Council President Miguel Melendez Jr., and myself, Willie J. Lightfoot, Sr.
Thank you, Chairperson Lightfoot. That report will be received, filed, and published, and we'll proceed with the vote. Introductory number 177, authorizing an agreement related to Peer Navigators for the Crisis Intervention Services Unit. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 178, authorizing an ammendatory agreement relating to firefighter physical agility tests. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we do have RURA, but before we adjourn, I just would like to make two quick announcements. Coming up next week, we have three days of budget hearings with the city administration on May 23rd, 20, oh, excuse me, 28th, 29th, and 30th. All the hearings will be streamed live on Facebook, YouTube, and on Channel 12. As a reminder to all, we are also looking to fill the Police Accountability Board seat in the Northwest District. If you live in the Northwest District and you are interested, please visit the city council's page on the website, or reach out to the city council office for more details. With no further business, we stand adjourned. And at this time, the meeting of the Board of RURA will now come to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Agent Councilmember Gruber? Agent Councilmember Lightfoot? Agent Councilmember Lupien?
Here.
Agent Councilmember Martin?
Here.
Agent Councilmember Monroe?
Here.
Agent Councilmember Patterson?
Here.
Agent Councilmember Smith? Agent Vice President Harris?
Here.
Agent President Melendez?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, Agent Patterson, the RURA Resolution Committee report, please.
Thank you, Agent President. To the council, the RURA Resolution Review Committee recommends for adoption the following entitled legislation. Introductory number URA 5, Resolution Modified in the Targeted Commercial Exterior Improvement Grant Program for the Dewey Driving Park Urban Renewal District. This report is respectfully submitted by myself, Michael A. Patterson, Agent Mitch Gruber, Agent Kimberly Smith, Agent Vice President LaShay D. Harris, and Agent President Miguel A. Melendez Jr.
Thank you, Agent Patterson. That report will be received, filed, and published, and we'll proceed with the vote. Thank you, Agent Patterson. That report will be received, filed, and published, and we'll proceed with the vote. Introductory number URA-5, Resolution Modifying the Targeted Commercial Exterior Improvement Grant Program for the Dewey Driving Park Urban Renewal District. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. With no other business to stand before RURA, we are adjourned.